I'm ready if you are, Reinhard.
Yeah. Okay. Good evening. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Willmet Zoning Board Appeals. Ms. Roberts, will you please call the role?
Mr. Felkoff.
Here.
Mr. Glattard.
Here.
Ms. Norick.
Here.
Mr. Pelletin.
Here.
Mr. Sermon.
Here.
Ms. Urban.
Here.
Chairman Schneider.
Here. Before we proceed with the business at hand, I would like to introduce our newest member, Giriya Glattard, and I would like him to say a few words about himself and why he looks forward to joining us.
First, I am excited about being on the zoning board. I've been living in Willmet since 1992, raised our three children here. They are all out of college and working. My history is I started out as an architect in 1985 when I graduated my masters. I worked for Skidmore and Zemaro, a large firm, moved to another large firm. Then the economy failed and I moved to Walgreens where I became an architect there at Walgreens. I was an architect there for three years and then moved into their real estate department where I took care of several markets, building new stores, the developers, the building facilities. So I was managing that, presenting sites to the community. I left in 2004 and became a developer with three partners. We built Walgreens stores and did that until 2008 when the markets crashed and we had a big problem. And luckily, I kept contact with Walgreens and I went back there and worked as the vice president in real estate. And did that until 2017 when they eliminated that position. So I've been unemployed. Started my own little business doing hand-to-hand work in Willmet. It was fun. I got to meet a lot of local residents here in Willmet and that kind of life. And now I'm, you could say, retired. So this is an exciting thing for me to be doing. I've been involved with zoning boards all my life and look forward to it.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Glattard, and welcome.
Yeah, welcome.
Welcome. This meeting is being conducted remotely via Microsoft Teams. For those watching this video, in the future, the state of Illinois is currently under the stay-at-home order issued by Governor Pritzker due to the coronavirus global pandemic. As a result, all in-person governmental meetings have been canceled. However, the Open Meetings Act now permits electronic meetings of governmental bodies like the Zoning Board of Appeals. And this evening, we're conducting our business in compliance with the state law. As usual, this meeting is being broadcast live on our local cable, Channel 6. It is also being broadcast on the internet on YouTube Live, and the URL for that is www.youtube.com/user/villageofwillmet/live. To participate in the meeting, you can join through Microsoft Teams. Visit the village's website at www.willmet.com and find the calendar event for the zoning board meeting. There's a link for you to join the meeting. You will also find the meeting agenda and case reports under the calendar. Alternatively, you can view the meeting on Channel 6 or on YouTube and call into the meeting, allowing you to listen and speak using your telephone. The phone number is 872-239-8225. Tonight's meeting code is 119-756-317. You may also submit your comments through YouTube Live and emails to comdev@willmet.com. A member of the village staff will read your comment to the zoning board. All comments to the Zoning Board of Appeals will be recorded in the meeting minutes as we typically do. For our meeting guests joining by Teams, when you are not speaking, please keep your device muted to minimize disruption of the proceedings and your video turned off so that the board members can be seen. For those of you new to our proceedings, the purpose of this board is to hear evidence on applications for variances from our zoning ordinance and on applications for special use. Based upon the evidence we are hearing this evening, we will make recommendations to the Village Board of Trustees as to whether the applications that come before us this evening should be granted or denied. We will vote to recommend granting or denying each application for variation based on whether the application meets the standards of review set forth in Section 5.4. F of our village ordinance. Applications for special use will be considered based upon whether the standards of review set forth in Sections 5.3. E of our village ordinance are met. The Village Board of Trustees will consider the recommendations we are making this evening at the next regularly scheduled meeting on January 12, 2021. Our recommendations to the board are advisory only. The village board has the final say on all applications and will make its determination as to whether to grant or deny them. The village board is not legally bound by our recommendations. There's one small exception to this rule. If this board makes a negative recommendation with respect to an application, in order for the Village Board of Trustees to approve that application, a super majority of five Village Board members must vote to approve it rather than a simple majority of four. There's one other small peculiarity to our proceedings of which you should be aware. This board does not operate by majority vote. Instead, operate by a tyranny of four. In other words, no matter how many board members are present on a given evening, in order to get a positive recommendation, an application must receive four affirmative votes. Today, we have a full complement of board members of seven. And so nevertheless, I guess I could still offer the option for anyone that wishes to request a continuance to the next available date on our schedule. The next available date is January 6. I don't think, since we have a full complement, that that will be necessary. The cases we shall hear this evening will be heard in the order set forth on the published agenda. When your case is called, please state your name and address and tell us exactly why your application meets the standards of review that are applicable to it. Each member of this board is a longtime resident of the village and has visited your property during the past week. In addition, we have received from the village staff a report containing all written information that you have submitted in support of your application, as well as any other correspondence that the village has received. Accordingly, it is not necessary that you repeat what you have already stated in writing. Please just hit the high points with particular attention as to why you believe that your application meets the standards of review. After the applicant has a chance to speak, we will open the floor to others who wish to speak on the application. I will recognize each attendee to ask if you have a comment, so please wait to be called. Everyone will be permitted to have their say, but we would ask that you keep your comments as short and to the point as possible. Any comments received through the YouTube chat, Teams chat, or email will be read into the record at this time. After we have heard all oral presentations, I will close the evidence and the members of the board will discuss what they have heard and take a vote. Once the evidence is closed, no further testimony on the application may be offered. The only people entitled to speak during that part of the proceeding will be the members of the board. This meeting is a legal proceeding, and all testimony tonight must be given under oath. If you are planning to testify tonight, I would ask you to raise your right hand at this time to be sworn in. So this may be virtual. I don't see you, Guy, but I hope. If you plan to testify, please do you swear or affirm that you will tell the truth in the testimony that you are about to give? If so, please say I do.
I do.
Ms. Roberts, will you please call the first case?
The applicant for our first case does not seem to be here, so I am going to get you started on the second case while I try to round up the first applicant. So our first case up for discussion is 2020 Z41, 321 Beverly Drive. This is a request for a 60.86 square foot lot coverage variation, a 465.99 square foot total floor area variation, a 0.42 foot front yard setback variation, and a 3.13 foot combined side yard setback variation to permit the construction of a second story addition and front awning on the legal nonconforming structure.
Thank you. Please, applicants, please go ahead and state your case.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name's Abraham Moore. I'm the owner of 321 Beverly Drive.
I'm Rachel Moore, Abraham's wife, also co-owner.
And we have our architects. And we have our architects Cheryl and Ravi with Rapp Architects. So we're asking for the board. Sorry, I'm a little nervous. Asking for the approval to do a renovation to our house. I think, as we said, we've lived here, what, three years now?
A little over three years.
And it's been really cool. We've done a bunch of history digging with the house. Actually, yesterday, the first permit was applied for our house, December 1, 1955. It was built as part of the Hollywood development. It was sold to its second owners in 1983, and we're the third owners of this property. We've actually gotten a lot of history from the Historical Society, and we actually have a photo of the original house, which is really cool. Unfortunately, as many of you know, our 1960s architecture is not really in style with modern day. But it's been really amazing, living in Willmet and coming back. I think you guys know, but I skipped over my notes here, but I graduated from New Tur in 97. Used to live in, what I understand, people call La La Land over there on Le Mans. And I'm really glad to be back at Willmet. I love the area.
And I've been teaching first grade at Harper Elementary for the past nine years. So I've really gotten to know the village and just the community, and we love living here. So we really want to turn this house into our forever home. And we think with what we're asking for tonight is kind of hopefully going to get us where we can raise our son Emmett, who is almost two years old, and we have one more on the way that's due in April. We would love to make this our forever home.
So the additional square foot, as you guys have been by the house, we're hoping to build over the garage. And Cheryl and Ravi can speak specifically to the structure and stuff. I know enough to be dangerous as a lighting designer. But the goal is to build out two bedrooms, one for Emmett and one for our future son. The joke we've been having is we haven't had a girl yet. So if we do have a girl, the one bedroom's a little bit bigger, so they can always bunk up there. So we're hoping that that works. We're really, in addition, we're, as you've seen, building out a little awning in front of the front door, so that way you don't get rained upon when you're there. But the rest of the property, we're staying within the boundaries of the existing nonconforming, I think that's the right language, property. So with that, I don't know, Ravi, if there's anything to add?
Yeah. So I'm Ravi Ricker. This is Cheryl Noel. We're Rapp Architecture. And I may be redundant a little bit with what Ms. Roberts has already stated, but essentially, we're requesting approval of several existing nonconforming criteria and a variance to permit, in addition, to extend up from the existing exterior walls with enough square footage to meet the client's scope and goals for the growth of their family moving forward. The addition, as well as the addition of a covered awning at the front entry and over the garage. The work, you know, the process of the work, we've endeavored to kind of meet and reflect the character of the neighborhood. Nothing outrageous. You know, we're trying to help the elevation. Avi's already pointed out, the history of this house is one in which a garage was built in the front of it. At a later date, a second floor addition, smaller addition was added on one side of it. And so the elevation has sort of suffered from a piecemeal approach over the years, and we're trying to kind of tie that together with the work we're doing while being very, very cognizant of limited financial resources in which to get that done. That's why it's very important the house follows existing exterior walls, some of which are existing nonconforming. And so, you know, that is in part what brings us to you.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant?
I do have, this is Bob Serman. I do have a question. You know, when we get these types of requests, the village board has asked us, as the zoning board, we just make recommendations, first of all. We don't make the ultimate decision. We're all volunteers and the board is all elected officials, so they make the final call. But what they ask us to do is to determine what the hardship is for the particular property. For us to understand that, I know everybody wants to expand their house to meet current needs, and I understand that from looking at the plan. It makes sense, the mudroom and other stuff and the bedrooms. But we need to know what the particular hardship is for the property. So I don't know if, who would like to respond to that?
Well, I think Avi should in the big picture, but I'll address a couple items, which is, we need to build up on existing walls, and some of those are existing nonconforming. So that's sort of where we start from. And I kind of mentioned that. From there, you know, I'll let Avi speak to the needs from his living, you know, the living end of this.
Yeah, I think the reason we started to investigate this addition was based on, with Emmett being younger and, you know, running down the stairs to get him.
Or me running down the stairs in the middle of the night multiple times. I think our hope and our goal is, especially as we continue to grow our family, to just be able to have everybody on the second floor, which is especially as they're very, very little, just having everyone kind of in that close proximity. So currently, in our house, Emmett's bedroom is on our main floor, and what we hope to turn into the mudroom is a guest bedroom. So those two rooms would then, which are now, two bedrooms would then kind of be moved upstairs, is our hope.
But I think, Bob, also, to your point on the, you know, what's the real hardship? I mean, I can mention, you know, many times where Emmett will be wailing, and we don't hear him because the internet went out, because our baby monitor doesn't work, whatever it may be. Because we're on different floors, and it's...
A safety thing in our minds.
You know, there's a number of things. I would also add that we don't feel that Willmet is unsafe, but we're not comfortable leaving the windows open at night. But we like, you know, in those spring days and those summer days where it's like spring and it's beautiful, we want to leave the windows open. We can't really, we don't feel comfortable doing that with him on the first floor and us on the second floor. So there's a safety factor there, too. But, you know, is that really a hardship? I would lean more towards being able to hear him when he's crying or something like that.
Yeah. Typical hardships are the shape of the lot, possibly the square footage of the lot, you know, if you're on a really small lot. But I do understand not having your whole family on a second floor is a hardship. I would consider that. So.
I don't, sorry, I don't want to interrupt, but I do feel like there's a distinction that I do want to make sure everybody's aware of. So they're currently, can build about 50% of the addition by right within zoning. So what they're requesting is not in entirety a request for a variance, but, and I'm rounding numbers, roughly about 50% of the square footage they're requesting is a difference.
Okay. Any other questions or comments for the applicant?
I just have a, this is for Ravi, because I wanted to understand just two things, and these are very small, but where does the front yard setback variation come from? Is that from the awning?
So there are two conditions that are being asked of for front yard setback. The building in its existing configuration is, I think it's 0.42 feet over the lot line. So just extending that front wall up really is structurally necessary for this to happen. We are asking for the existing nonconformity to be accepted again. And then there's the awning setback, which I believe is a 0.25 foot setback or variation to the setback there. And that's because we're trying to create enough that the front entry is actually notched into the house, and we're trying to create enough depth there, get a reasonable awning that, you know, would help cover it for them.
All right. And then the second one is, and can you do the exact same explanation for the 3.13 foot combined side yard setback? Where does that come from? Because you're using the existing walls, right?
Yes. And that actually is, again, that one is an existing nonconforming condition that would exist regardless of the addition, and the addition in no way impacts that change. There's, the east side of the house has an existing master bedroom addition that was added at the top of it. The west side of the house is just the garage. There's nothing over that. And so we're really just extending that front addition across the front of the house to the west. The footprint of the house doesn't change, and that is an existing nonconforming condition on the side lots.
All right. Thank you very much.
Okay. Ravi, I do have another question. You know, we're often asked to see if we can reduce the variances that are proposed. You know, it's just a process we go through on all of them. But when I look at it, I don't, I'm an architect. I don't see that happening because your north wall, you put, it looks like where the original house was sited before they put the addition on the back. Is that true? I mean, it looks like, you know, my point is you couldn't move the north wall any further south because then you would, you'd have to modify the whole stairway. So really, really, there's no way to reduce that north wall and bring it in to reduce the square footage. You're on a bearing wall, it looks like.
Correct. So essentially, what's happening is, I mean, the east is determined by the existing structure. The south is determined by an existing exterior wall, the west by an existing exterior wall. And as you're pointing out, the north wall is the one thing which doesn't sit on an existing exterior wall. It is over, you know, house below, but we are following the existing second floor addition across. So yes. From a structural perspective, it is, you know, the logical, affordable, without having to add an additional structure and extreme cost to the project. That's sort of the...
Okay. Well, that makes sense. I'd just like to go through the process of reviewing those.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions for the applicant? Hearing none. Lisa, have we, do we have any other comments from anyone else on this case?
There's no one in the YouTube chat, no email. But if, Mr. Chairman, if I could just take a moment to make one correction. The awning is conforming. When it was originally reviewed, the encroachment was cited incorrectly, so that request should be removed from the... I failed to take it out of the table, but it is not included as a variation being asked for in the request.
So which part is being removed of the request?
It's already out of the request.
Oh, okay.
It just shows it's not conforming in the table. It's out of the...
Thank you.
So yeah.
Hearing no other comments, what else? I will close the testimony and ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion. I move to recommend granting a request for a 60.86 square foot or 0.73% lot coverage variation, a 465.99 square foot or 5.55% total floor area variation, a 0.42 front yard setback variation, and a 3.13 combined side yard setback variation to permit the construction of a second story addition and front awning on a legal nonconforming structure at 321 Beverly Drive in accordance with the plan submitted.
Brad.
Okay, Brad. Thank you.
I can support this. I think it's a well-thought-out plan. Architecturally, I think it's very pleasing aesthetically on the outside, especially. And like I said, I think the hardship is trying to raise a family and just have the master bedroom on one floor and the other bedrooms on the other floor, I think is hardship. And I think the architect has made, you know, his best efforts to keep this as a modest request to accommodate reasonable, reasonable needs, so I can support it.
Thank you. Mr. Felkoff?
I also support this for the reason that Bob just mentioned. Let me just add really two more. I think the variations are really very small, and they are kept to a minimum by the architect in order to have as little variation as possible. I also, I have to admit, I had never been down the street before. So this is one of those streets that, to me, is new. And after seeing the house, which clearly is an older house, I realized that the neighborhood is a gorgeous neighborhood. There's a lot of very impressive homes, and this will be very much in keeping with the types of homes that are in that neighborhood. So I think it's very consistent with the other homes in that neighborhood.
Thank you. Any other comments by the board members?
I agree with what's already been said. I think the physical hardship of the existing structure is that it's nonconforming, and building on existing walls makes any addition nonconforming as a result. And as a mother, I cannot imagine what a nightmare it is to be running up and downstairs in the middle of the night. That is a huge family and social hardship, if ever there was one. I'll be able to support this.
Thank you, Maria.
So this is Riley Bowden. I had some problems with this. And it's not because I agree with much of what has been said. I think that it's designed very well, and I think that there is a need for it, that the Moores have demonstrated. I have a son who's a type 1 diabetic and needs to get insulin or glucose during the night, and so I do a fair bit of running up and down the stairs, even though his bedroom is on the same floor, to get to the refrigerator to get a glass of milk or something like that. And it is a hardship. I've never, and I've only been doing this for, I don't know, a year or two, but I haven't heard of not having bedrooms all on the same floor as a hardship that has come up in another case. As Bob said in the beginning, it's usually the lot shape or the lot size or the way the home was constructed in terms of, or something like that. And this home is already fairly large. And I think the one issue that is a question in my mind is the total floor area variation. Because while everything else is sort of a pre-existing condition, that one is not. That one is by choice. that one is by choice. And five-and-a-half percent is not de minimis, it's, you know, fairly large, and it's making a, a very big house. So while I am very sympathetic with the Moores, and I'm, I'm very sympathetic with the, the design, I, I'm torn about whether or not it actually meets the standard for hardship. That's all.
Thank you. Any other comments by the?
This is Didier. I'd like to make a comment. I agree that having children on a different floor is a hardship. I find it hard to believe that having en suites to the children's room, laundry on the same floor, and doubling the size of the, of the closet is a hardship. I think said, I do believe because of the nature of the building, taking those things out, and the amount of square footage being asked would be de minimis, is not appropriate, not appropriate, but is a concern I had when I looked at it, asking for a lot of items that are not a hardship. I'd also like to add, for the architects that I believe in the new elevations they created look very nice.
Thank you. Any others?
And this is Chris. I agreed with my earlier predecessors that I, I can support this. I know that you didn't have the exact calculations, but you said that probably half of that addition, you could build by right, so I think it's probably not, you know, the, the variance is not as, or, or the additional lot coverage is not as excessive as Ryrie pointed out, so, although we don't have those calculations. So I can support this.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm going to come back and say, I, I, perhaps I misspoke, and didn't understand, but we're talking about the total floor area variation, which takes the by-right aspect into account. So the five-point-five-five-percent total floor area variation that they're requesting is the additional space.
Beyond what, beyond what's allowed?
By right, yeah.
I stand.
I, also, as I was looking at this, and I was reflecting on the case that we had just two weeks ago on Elmond, although we're, we're clearly are making it, always saying that precedent doesn't mean anything, these cases should stand on their own, but that was a case where we had a similar variation request, if I remember, five percent, and floor area variation, and that turned on the fact, primarily because the, there was a kind of unique garage with a second floor, and it was kind of a historic, quasi-historical, and they maintained the exterior of, of the main house and so forth, et cetera. And we thought that with all of that, that it was appropriate for us to, one, to accommodate their request, to, to have plans, the first floor and second floor, that fit the current lifestyle. And we thought that was important, without doing too much, too many changes to the exterior felt was important for the neighborhood appearance. And that kind of persuaded us that we should proceed in granting that variation. In this case, I am, that's Riley, I was initially kind of saying, can we, can they do this? Can they do something without having a variation on the, the total floor area? And I've come to the conclusion that it's really not possible. I think, I don't know how they could do it and still accommodate their very reasonable needs, and, so I'm, I am again, for different reasons than what we did two weeks ago, to, to support this request. So.
I, I would just add, one of the things I like about these meetings is that I hear the perspective and viewpoints of the other commissioners, and sometimes it sways my thinking, other times not. And, and just while people have been recapping since Ryrie spoke, I went back and looked at the other floor area variations that have been approved by this board over the last five years, and fourteen of the sixteen that had FAR percentage requests greater than what is being sought tonight on three-twenty-one Beverly is, have been granted. And that's, I, I think that's strong information for us to take into account, and I really do believe that the Moores have shown clear hardship, not simply in terms of the existing structure and property, but in terms of how they live their lives. And in my book, The Impact of a Home on Your Life, is every bit as important as the characteristics of the structure.
Thank you, Maria.
I just, this is Bob, I just have one thing to add. I took, looked at a quick calculation, and the second floor is about seven-hundred-and-twenty square feet, so by right, they're able to build, you know, a, a couple of hundred feet of that. But from a planning standpoint, and I know this really shouldn't be a consideration, but if you were to reduce the square footage, basically you'd eliminate one bedroom, so then you'd only have, you know, the master suite and one bedroom up there, which doesn't, from a planning standpoint, would make sense for a family, so.
Thank you. Mr. Sermon, I think we're ready to take a vote. Ms. Roberts?
Mr. Sermon?
Yes.
Mr. Falco?
Yes.
Mr. Glittard?
Yes.
Ms. Norick?
Yes.
Mr. Pelletan?
Yes.
Ms. Urban?
Yes.
Chairman Schneider?
Yes. So this goes with a positive recommendation to the Board of Trustees, who will hear this case on January eleventh, on January twelfth. And thank you very much, and good luck.
Thank you so much, everybody.
Thank you very much.
Happy holidays, be safe.
Same to you. Ms. Roberts, can we go to the next case?
First, can I get a motion on the approval of the chairman's business?
Yes, sorry. I need somebody.
I move to authorize the chairman to prepare the report and recommendation for the zoning Board of Appeals for case number twenty-twenty Z forty-one.
Second. This is Ryrie, I'll second that.
Ms. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Pelletan?
Yes.
Mr. Falco?
Yes.
Mr. Glittard?
Yes.
Ms. Norick?
Yes.
Mr. Sermon?
Yes.
Chairman Schneider?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now we can go to the next case.
Yes, and our applicant is here. My apologies for a mix-up there. Our next case is twenty-twenty Z forty-two, two-nineteen Cantaloupe Place. This is a request for a nine-point-six-three-foot front yard porch setback variation, a thirteen-point-nine-six-foot front yard porch stair setback variation, and a ninety-eight-point-two-seven-square-foot front yard impervious surface coverage variation to permit the construction of a new front porch and stairs on a legal nonconforming structure.
Thank you.
Hi.
Ms. Miller?
Yes, hi. Okay, so we, we, long story short, we bought this house eight years ago. We saved it from demolition, almost did not get a mortgage, because they said it was uninhabitable. So that's a fun fact, you guys. But we are moving to the outside of the house now. We've done a lot of work inside. And so the, how it is now is that we have fronts, front steps that are different heights and lengths, that go up to a front door that enter into a mudroom, and then enter it through a second front door into the house. So we would like to add a porch, like a landing, basically outside of the mudroom, so that when you go in the house and when you come out, you actually have a landing on the exterior of the house, instead of just front, instead of just steps. It's, I, the addition of the porch is, well, it's four-and-a-half, roughly four-and-a-half feet by eight feet. It's just tucked in there, up against the house, and then kind of bumps the current steps toward the property line. So they just, I think we get closer by, we get less than three feet closer to the properly, property line that we are at now, but we make the steps to code and have a nice little landing that'll also look nice. So, I think we found that there is a requested variance that was granted, that's in our neighborhood at four-thirty-five Prairie, and granted last year, it looks similar to what we're requesting.
So how much, this is, this is Marlon Schneider. So you currently, the, the steps, I know the, the risers are irregular right now.
Yeah.
And, but they're currently ten risers, is that correct? And you're reducing that to nine risers?
I am not, we had an architect do the plan, so I don't know exactly the number.
But, but how much are you, the edge of the stair to the property line, the current one is, how, what is the dimension, and how closer are you going now?
Yeah, so we're just, we're moving less than three feet closer to the property line.
But it is three feet? Almost three feet?
Yes.
I, I think the easy way to look at this, Reinhardt and everyone else, is that I believe that the door and the window are staying in the same location, and you're filling that notch, giving yourself a landing of four-foot-four, and, which is a modest area outside of a door.
Yeah.
It's kind, it's kind of dangerous to have a door and then just steps right away.
Yeah.
I just want to have a landing. So it looks like it's being shifted by that four-foot-four, maybe a little different because of the number of stairs. It's almost a house that is missing a porch by the way they originally notched it.
Right, yeah.
Just asking for, they have a porch there.
I, 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 I agree, but missing a porch, because the porch was enclosed. It had a porch. And I, I don't think that the Millers enclosed the porch, although I don't know, but it's quite obvious that there was a front porch that was enclosed.
Do you think, well, so I'm, do you think that was where the mudroom is, or do you think it's the front room?
Both.
Because we have lots of, I know, we have lots of theories on how they went about doing things. But it wasn't us, we're not the one that, right now, the overhang, how it is, the overhang with the roof, the water drips onto the stairs, and they're uneven, and they're brick, and even though they're rougher than having wood steps, they get really slick, and we've actually had a neighbor fall, and it just, it gets really, you know, at night in the winter, it doesn't, there's no safe place to stand when you're waiting to get in the door out.
Right, and I, I would say, you know, this is another case of, I, I think that the design is good, and it makes sense, and having a landing makes sense, replacing the stairs makes sense for all the reasons that we've been discussing. It does push the stairs closer to the lot line than any other property on the block, and there are a couple of houses that are in similar situations, but that still have the front porches that are, are adjacent to you. So I see the need for it, I think it's a, a good idea, but I have a real problem with that lot line. And the only, the only other option I can see to maintain the landing is to turn the stairs ninety degrees and to make them narrower, you know, a four-foot-wide stair as opposed to a seven-foot-wide, but I, I don't know if that is going to make a significant difference. These are my thoughts about it.
Yeah, I agree a little with you, Ryrie, that, you know, I hate to see the stairs, you know, get closer to the street, but I don't, I don't know if there's a, a better option to, from a planning standpoint, to do it. I did notice one house over on Prairie where the, I think the stairs are even closer. I think they're maybe only a foot off the lot line. So, well, it's close to what this, so.
Well, this is Brad. I, I agree with the concerns that have been expressed about the stairs. I will for a moment address the front yard impervious surface coverage. I gather that some of that is coming from filling in what is essentially a piece of dirt to the right side of the stairs. That will now become part of the stairs leading up to this small landing, is that correct?
Yeah, so we actually ripped out the bush.
Okay.
While we were having other work done.
So tell me.
The patient of it.
To the, to the, I guess that's to the north of that is what I found, and correct me if I'm wrong, to be one of the funniest walks. It's a walk that goes nowhere.
I know. And that, that perfectly sums up the house that we, we bought, actually.
So is that, is that walk really going in, do you ever use it for any purpose? I could see kids using it to sneak around the house, but it just, halfway down, it turns to dirt.
Yeah, I know. No, and there's a lot of stuff that grows back there, too, on the side yard of my neighbor, and so there's too many spiders. I don't go over there.
So, but could that walk on the north side of the house all be ripped out?
Yeah.
And so this.
Yeah, I guess.
All right, and this goes to Lisa. If that were ripped out, would that change the front yard impervious surface coverage, or am I going down a rabbit hole?
I don't think it will eliminate the variation.
Okay.
No, it's, the variation is almost a hundred square feet, so it'd have to be ten by ten.
Yeah.
To eliminate it, would reduce it, though.
I, I think it might be about fifty-four feet that would be removed for that front piece, the side there.
And a lot of the walk is on the side of the house as opposed to the front of the house.
Yeah.
And, and Ms. Miller, is there any other way for you to access the backyard from the front?
Yeah. I think, you know what, we were talking about underneath that porch right there. I think that the architect put that in because we talked about maybe having a little door and like shoving bikes under there, just because we have so little storage. But it's, I, it's not a hill I'm going to die on. I would, you know, I'd rather have friends, I can get rid of it.
When you access the south side of the house, there's, it looks like you can, from the left side of the house, or, or the south side, you can see the garage, and it looks like there's a straight run on the south side of the house, back to the garage.
Yeah. We have a, we have, we actually have three entrances to the backyard. One of them is on the north side, one of them's on, you can see from the front sidewalk, you can see an entry to the back on the left on the south side, and then there's one all the way back by the garage. Our house is like. Our house is like, you can probably tell based on this, but our house is all the way on the north side of the lot, so we have a huge side yard. So we mostly just use the side yard and not this north side.
Any other questions? I would just, if, if you were to turn, as someone, I think Mr. Sherman suggested that you turn the stair.
Right, yeah.
The stair, to turn the stair adjacent to the porch and make it parallel to the house, you would need a bigger landing in order to make that turn, I guess. And I don't know what that would do to the, would probably increase the impervious surface coverage. Just a comment.
Yeah, that's a good point.
And the only other thing is, I, I don't know if you, I, I know, it's important to create a landing. I think it's just dangerous to have that, the door at the top of the last riser. And so the landing is critical for safety purposes, for safety reasons. And I guess you've never considered taking out that little mudroom and pushing the whole landing further into the house?
Well, no. I have not. We actually, well, we have four children. So we use the mudroom a lot for coats and hats and jackets and bikes and strollers and, and it's all enclosed, so.
Okay. Any other questions for the, for the Miller?
My only other thought in trying to maybe reduce the variation is does the, does the landing have to span that entire, you know, area? Could it be, you'd just be creating kind of a different notch? Like if it didn't extend all the way across the window that's north of your door?
So like putting the, the pole in the middle of the window? Do you mean like moving it south?
I guess I was just saying, rather than having the, the little porches, you know, it's four feet in depth, I'm not sure what the length of it is, but if, if it has to be that full length.
Yeah, I think just visually, you know, it works well because of the way that the, we would just pull, I don't know if you can tell, but the roof doesn't come all the way out. The roof follows the current portrait now, the lack of portrait now. So we would pull the roof all the way down?
Yeah. Yeah, I was just looking, I wasn't looking at the elevation at all. I was only looking sort of down on.
Oh, yeah.
Sort of forgetting about, yeah, the roof.
Yeah. Yeah.
I think by, by the, the way the plan's drawn, the, there's already a notch in the roof. So there's really just kind of completing the roof.
Yeah.
To, to, to a square at the corner.
Any other comments? If not, I, I think we have, we got two letters, Ms. Roberts, one in favor and one opposed. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Any, are any of those people on the phone or somewhere accessible or not?
It seems not.
All right, I think the, the board members have received those letters and have taken them into account. And if we have no more questions or comments for the applicant, I will, I can close the testimony and ask for a motion.
This is Ryrie. I'll move to recommend granting a request for a 9.63-foot front yard porch setback variation, a 13.96-foot front yard porch stair setback variation, and a 98.27-square-foot or 7.86% front yard impervious surface coverage variation to permit the construction of a new front porch and stairs on the legal non-conforming structure at 219 Catalpa Place in accordance with the plan submitted.
Second.
Thank you.
So I don't have a whole lot to add to what I originally said. You know, I, I'm concerned about the, the setback from the property line. I think this is a good design. I think it improves the stairs, the, the, the appearance of the house, the safety aspect. It all makes sense. If I could think of another way of doing it, I would say no. You know, you, you need to go back and do it another way. But I don't believe that, you know, pushing the stairs into the house by changing the, the enclosed front porch or the mudroom is really a viable way of doing it. It's a possibility, and it occurred to me as well. But I don't think that that is something that we can realistically ask of the, the owners. So that's my thought on it. The hardship is the, the way the house is built and its proximity to the property line to start out with, it's a non-conforming structure. And so I can support the, the petition, the request.
I, I would agree with Ryrie. The, you can't even replace the existing steps exactly the way they are without needing a variance. The addition of the landing, I think, is a basic safety measure. And if you have four kids coming in and out of the house, I'm not quite sure you can fit all four of them, plus a parent, on the landing that's being proposed as you unlock the door. I, I think this is a very modest request, well-designed, and I'll be supporting it.
Thank you.
I, I concur with my colleagues on all the points. I, I don't think there's a better solution out there. But I just wanted, if the, the, the people that wrote the letters then, just I wanted to reassure them, the neighbors, that we do read those and we did take into consideration their thoughts. I know one of them was concerned about how close the stair was getting to the sidewalk. And as a board, we all evaluated that. And that's the decision, you know, the decision was to go ahead with it, so.
I had a thought, she could do fold downstairs, sort of like an attic, you can pull down.
Yeah. Yeah, you, but you'd go to the building department and try to get that one passed.
And in my luck, they would not fold down when my arms were full of groceries and everyone was screaming, so it'd be great.
So I can concur. I, at first I was reluctant to support this because the stairs do get so close to the sidewalk. And I, I'm beginning to understand better after hearing Bob's comments, Maria's, and Ryrie's comments, that there's not much else to do. I just hope that the applicant would remove the walkway to nowhere on the north side of the house, just because if we can do anything, even if it's, it'd be about half of the variation or the, or the square foot front yard impervious surface coverage variation, it would be, you know, every little bit helps. But I'll be supporting this.
I don't have any further comments. I concur with this and we support it.
And I, I concur with everyone when I first looked at this.
Okay, thank you, thank you. I, I also, and, and the other thing is, it's not inconsistent, relatively speaking, with, with all other, with similar situations up and down the block. So I can support it as well. I think we're ready to call for a vote, Ms. Roberts.
Mr. Pelletin?
Yes.
Ms. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Falcoff?
Yes.
Mr. Glittard?
Yes.
Ms. Norick?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Chairman Schneider?
Yes. This goes with a positive recommendation unanimous to the Board of Trustees on January 12th. They may or may not want to discuss this, so you may want to be there. But thank you very much and good luck.
Thank you. Thank you, guys, for your time.
Thank you. I move to authorize the chairman to prepare the report and recommendation for the Zoning Board of Appeals for Case Number 2020-Z42.
Second.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Ms. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Falcoff?
Yes.
Mr. Glittard?
Yes.
Ms. Norick?
Yes.
Mr. Pelletin?
Yes.
Chairman Schneider?
Yes.
Thank you.
We have one more item on the agenda?
I move to accept the minutes of the November 4th, 2020 Zoning Board of Appeals meeting.
I'll second that.
Ms. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Pelletin?
Yes.
Mr. Falcoff?
Yes.
Mr. Glittard?
I abstained since I wasn't at that meeting.
You still get to vote.
Ms. Norick?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Chairman Schneider?
Yes. Thank you, and.
Move to adjourn?
Second.
Mr. Pelletin?
Yes.
Ms. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Falcoff?
Yes.
Mr. Glittard?
Yes.
Ms. Norick?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Chairman Schneider?
Yes. And the meeting's adjourned, and I wish you all a.